I'd like to call this May 25th, 2023 Board of Education Regular Meeting to order. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Dochek?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here. All present and accounted for. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next are our district goals. They remain financial prudence, academic achievement and growth, and community engagement. And as we reflect on these goals, I'd like to thank the Strongsville Education Foundation for continuing to help fund field trips for our students. This year, we returned to some off-site field trips. The foundation has once again generously provided the funding for transportation to destinations that included the Great Lakes Science Center, the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, and Playhouse Square. We appreciate the Strongsville Education Foundation and all they do to help support student learning and growth. Next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Ms. Hausum. We have a number of recognitions tonight, and we're going to start with our Extra Mile Award. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kilbane and Ms. Dochek.
Hello, good evening. This month, we visited Whitney Elementary School, and I have to say that this was probably one of the most enthusiastic group of teachers and students when this award was given to both of them. When it came to the teachers, they all dressed up, and they all were excited all day, waiting, watching the clock when we were going to get there, and celebrating. They were all in tears when we presented this award to their coworker. And in the student in this case, when he was presented the award, the look on his face, you would have thought he won a million dollars. It was the most heartfelt, excited, happy, proud-of-oneself moment I think I've seen this year in terms of something like this. And we'd like to invite Mrs. Hawk up on stage to explain her nominations and her award recipients. All right, so why don't we start with Nakunj? Nakunj, do you want to come on up with me, buddy? And by the way, look at how dapper he looks tonight. We could all get some styling advice from Nakunj right here. Come on up, buddy. All right, well, I am very excited to introduce you to Nakunj Anand. He is a fifth grader at Whitney Elementary. And Nakunj is a student who truly embodies the model Mustang. He's a very global learner. He finds opportunities outside of the typical role of a student in order to benefit the whole learning community. Nakunj is in the Whitney Band. He's a member of the morning announcements, and I have to tell you, we do our morning announcements live with the green screen. He doesn't even need to practice. He can just, he can just do it. It's amazing. Wednesday jokes, he is pretty good at telling jokes, making people laugh. He does a great job at that. Maybe one day, he'll be a weatherman. I don't know. He's very good at it. He's also a member of our Student Council at Whitney. Nakunj is always looking for opportunities to learn and grow. He is empowered and challenges himself. In fifth grade, Mrs. Bongers, who is the English Language Arts teacher, she does something called the 40 Book Challenge with her students, where she challenges them and motivates them to do some reading outside of school but also in school, and reading some chapter books. And after each chapter book, they have to come tell her all about the book. They give a summary, she asks questions. And Nakunj has exceeded the 40 Book Challenge, so he has read over 40 books, which has earned him a golden coin for our book vending machine, which we are very excited about, and that is a huge accomplishment. Nakunj is also a great friend. He has a personality that shines. He is empathetic to others and takes a personal interest in the people around him. He lends a listening ear if a friend needs someone to talk to, and he is one who shares great advice if needed. Nakunj is a wonderful role model for others, and most importantly, he leads by example. We will greatly miss Nakunj as he moves on to the middle school next year, but I'm certain that he will continue to grow and shine in this new chapter in his life. So best of luck to you, Nakunj, and congratulations. Mom and dad, if you would like to come up for a picture, that would be great.
Do you have any words you want to share? Any advice for fellow students?
I'm just really honored to get this award. Like, I've just, like, I was mind-blown when I got this award. It's just an honor. Like, I never thought I would have gotten this award. And I'm really thankful for Mrs. Hawk for nominating me for this award, and thank you to everybody who's here for everything.
Do you have a joke you can share? What is it, Joe?
Not really.
Ms. Russ, can you take a picture?
I can take it.
Or somebody?
I don't know, you stand by him.
Are you coming?
Good job.
You need to shake hands with her.
Yes. It's a special moment for you, buddy.
Thank you.
He has such a great picture.
Congratulations.
All right, so next up, I am very honored if Mrs. Zach would like to come on up. All right. Okay, it was hard for me to write this because it's very emotional, because she is just an outstanding person altogether, I have to tell you. But I'm very honored to have the privilege of presenting to you this award of going the extra mile to Andrea Zach, who is our Intervention Specialist at Whitney Elementary. Andrea is a wonderful educator who cares deeply about her students. She genuinely wants all of her students to succeed and will do absolutely anything possible to make sure that that happens. Our school district has learned a lot over the last past few years about the science of reading through letters training. Andrea has taken the initiative to apply what she has learned to her students in her classroom. She has also taken the initiative to become officially certified to teach Orton Gillingham, which is a program to help support our young readers. It has been incredible to see how much her instruction has been tailored explicitly to what her students need, and the amount of progress that her students have shown this school year is absolutely incredible. And that's all due to her hard work. Not only does Andrea care about her students academically, but she also cares about them socially and emotionally. She finds opportunities to build relationships with her students. She checks in with her students throughout the day. She finds things that her students are interested in and finds opportunities to discuss those interests with the kids. Her students feel loved, safe, and supported in the classroom. I had the opportunity to interview two of her students, and they shared why they care so much about Mrs. Zach. And both of these kids know that they are going to be live on SCS TV, by the way. So our first student is Jaden. When I asked Jaden why he cares about Mrs. Zach, he said, "I love that Mrs. Zach buys stuff for us. She knew that I did not have snow pants and wanted to play outside in the snow with my brothers. Mrs. Zach used her own hard-working money to buy me and my brother snow pants, a jacket, and boots for the winter. At other schools, my teachers were mean to me. Mrs. Zach cares about me, and she is the best teacher I ever had." The second student I interviewed, his name is Cory, and here's what Cory said. "Mrs. Zach is really positive all the time. She is helpful because she makes reading, writing, and math fun. She also has really helpful posters in her room. She gives out happy dollars. We get money for working really hard. We can redeem the money for prizes, and if you save $100, she'll buy you fast food." "Mrs. Zach creates really fun activities that make learning exciting. Not only does Mrs. Zach care about her students, but she cares about her colleagues as well. And when I say colleagues, I don't just mean colleagues, I mean her friends and family. That is what Whitney truly is, people who care about one another and support each other. Mrs. Zach is a true role model for this. She and all of her Room One friends and colleagues do whatever they need to help each other, support one another in any capacity possible. Room One is a team, which is why you will see one member of Room One sitting here videotaping this whole spiel that I'm giving right now. Myself, Whitney, and the entire Strongsville community is lucky to have Mrs. Zach. She is a huge asset to our students, and I personally am very grateful to have the pleasure of working with her each and every day."
Let's give another round of applause to our Extra Mile Award winners from Whitney this month. We're going to keep the recognitions going. At this time, I'm going to ask our Assistant Athletic Director, Mr. Jason Kepler, to come to the stage for his presentation. Jason?
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking the board for this opportunity to recognize these students in their run to the state championship tournament for our middle school. In a couple of moments, we're going to bring a couple of students down and recognize them for their efforts and their successes throughout the season and qualifying for the state tournament. Before I get there, I wanted to take a moment to kind of give everyone a snapshot of their hard work, their commitment to the school, to their sport, and just to their team. So perhaps of all of our middle school sports, the wrestling team has the biggest commitment. Their season is five months long, they have practice five nights a week, many nights those practices can be almost four hours. Their practices usually start off with an hour-long study table. It leads into a shuttle ride from the middle school to the high school to have practice over here. They roll out their mats, they conduct an hour-and-a-half-long practice, they mop up the mats, they roll it up, and they put it away. And by the time that these practices were done, these guys were spent. Long day at school, they worked hard at practice, and they were just tired. On some of these days, some of the students you're going to meet here tonight, they would also go to a private gym for even more practice on the same night, just so they can better themselves as wrestlers. And it was this type of commitment and hard work that continually, it continued to be on display throughout the course of the season, and it led to so many different success stories. Fellas, I just want you to be very proud of all of your efforts and your successes this year. I know everyone here at this school is very proud of you as well. I don't want to forget about the parents. Parents, we all know if we have sports kids, this commitment is on you as well. And I just want to thank you very much for being so committed to your kids, so committed to the team, and so committed to Strongsville. Coaches, Coach Hurdle, Coach Sebastian, I'd like to thank you guys. Your efforts and your leadership to these boys were paramount in their success, and I firmly believe they wouldn't be where they're at without you guys. So, coaches, I'd like to bring you down and recognize these boys here tonight.
All right, so right now, we're going to invite all of the state qualifiers up to the stage. Nick Henry Dane, if you want to come up. These guys worked their tails off the whole season. Let's give them a round of applause one more time. All right, so. All right, so the first guy we're going to talk about is Henry Smith, right here. He's so technically sound, it's unbelievable. I mean, the kid works hard all the time, perfecting his technique. Like Jason said, he goes to the Arsenal and other practice facilities to just go compete with the best, and it reflects in his success throughout the season. He got bounced in the blood round at the state tournament, which essentially means he was one match away from placing. So, you know, I know next year that he's going to put the work in and make it up to the podium. And throughout the entire season, he only weighed like, you were, what, four to six pounds underneath the smallest weight class, right? And just an absolute monster throughout the whole season. So, great job this year, Henry. This next guy is Nick Caricelia. He puts his head down and goes to work in every practice and every competition we've ever had. He could be the most talented guy in the room with his work ethic. And he's also just a natural-born leader. He ran the warm-ups for us. He would stay after practice and help some of the guys with their technique and give them pointers and things like that. He'd also stay after and learn some stuff himself. You know, I could go on, but he's done a tremendous job this year, and I'm excited to see what he's going to do next year. All right, this third guy couldn't make it today. He had a baseball tournament going on. His name is Dane Albert. His in-season growth was absolutely tremendous. He started going to other practices like Henry did at the Arsenal and the Rogue and just continued to get better, continued to learn, continued to work hard throughout the whole season. Like Nick, he would stay after and either learn some stuff or help out some of the newer guys that don't know as much. But yeah, it was a pleasure having Dane, and again, I'm excited to see what this group of guys are going to do next year.
It's wonderful to see the work our coaches and our students are doing at the middle school in terms of building a strong wrestling program. That starts also at our youth program that's continued to grow and develop over the years from our community volunteers and support, and that all leads to bolstering our high school program. So, congratulations to all of those young men on all the hours of work that they've put in to achieve what they've done so far at such a young age. Next, we have, we're going to bring up Ms. Jenna Namick, who is one of our phenomenal teachers here at the high school and DECA advisor, to share the accomplishments of some of our DECA students this year. So Jenna?
Good evening. For those of you who may not be familiar with DECA, it is an association for marketing students. DECA really does prepare students to be leaders and entrepreneurs in careers like marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. DECA is actually a global entity. There are 177,000 members, 3,200 high school chapters, and 200 collegiate chapters. At Strongsville High School, all students who are in the two-year marketing program participate in DECA. So aside from what's actually learned in the classroom, students compete at the DECA marketing competitions, which consist of a 100-question test and a marketing role play. So during these role plays, students are presented with some sort of marketing scenario. They have to develop a creative solution for this problem, and then they have to present this idea in front of a judge. This year, we had 84 SHS DECA members, all of which competed at our local district competition. From that competition, we had 51 of our students qualified to compete at the state competition in Columbus. At the state competition, we then had 22 of our students make the final round, and 11 of those students placed in the top 10 in the state. The students that I have here with me that are being recognized tonight placed high enough to earn a spot at the national competition in Orlando, Florida. Additionally, two of the students being recognized tonight were chosen to attend the National Conference in a leadership capacity. Each state only gets so many spots to send students for the Leadership Series, and two of the SHS students were selected for this opportunity. So being a top competitor and recognized as an outstanding leader are both exceptional accomplishments that not many students achieve in their high school career. When we went to Orlando in April, the students got to network with DECA members from around the country and compete at the national level. When asked about their experience, senior student Louis Martzoff said, "This opportunity pushed me to be the best version of myself and explore new possibilities. I enjoyed being able to network with students from around the country and even make friendships that will carry over into the future. I hope future DECA students take their work seriously and aim high so that they have this opportunity next year." Each student here tonight embodies what it takes to be a model Mustang. I am so proud to be their teacher, and I'm so grateful to have had this group of students with me, and I'm excited for the juniors that are here tonight to see all that they accomplish next year. Thank you to the board for giving us a chance to recognize the accomplishments of these amazing students. Now, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize them individually. So with us here tonight, we have senior who has just graduated, Louis Martzoff. Louis, come on up. Louis was the only SHS student this year to place first in his event at the state competition. He competed in the apparel and accessories event, and he intends to go to LIM College in New York City to study business administration in the fall. Next with us, we have juniors Parme Oswald and Michael Rose. They are a team. Come on up. Michael and Parme placed fifth at the state competition in their marketing management event. Both are juniors, not exactly sure what the future holds, maybe Miami, maybe business, but I'm excited to have them back again for next year. There are three young ladies who are not able to make it tonight that I'd like to take a moment to recognize as well. Senior Grace Griffiths placed fifth at the state competition in the Human Resources Management Event, and she is attending the University of Miami in Florida, and she is majoring in biomedical engineering. And we have seniors Sarah Fleming and Madison Gilbert. They did place in the top 10 at the state competition, but they were the two that were chosen from the state of Ohio to attend the National Conference for the Leadership Series. Sarah will be going to Michigan State University to study international marketing and entrepreneurship, and Madison will be attending Miami University of Ohio to study marketing. Congratulations.
All right, so we've touched on recognizing athletics. We've just done academics, and it's time to round it out with the arts. So I'm going to bring up our high school principal, Mr. Bill Wengler, to share some of the outstanding accomplishments of our phenomenal music program here at the high school. Bill wanted the tension to set in. Set the farthest seat in the auditorium. Tried to sit as far away as possible. So, we have a lot of amazing things at Strongsville High School, and if you, we have a lot, when we do our academic awards, I talk about the many wonderful things we have, and you've heard, it was middle school athletics, but certainly that filters to the high school. We have amazing programs, but this one's a little bit personal for me as well because not only do I admire the heck out of the people I'm going to call up here, but my daughter is, plays for Andy Hire, and all I have to say about that is that my daughter is currently in the top 5%, and for two years, I've been telling her, "I'm never going to get an apple, so you have to give me an apple." And she's informed me that Mr. Hire is currently ahead of me in the apple race, so, as is Mrs. Vendetta, who's not here. And the reason I tell that story is because they're not just great at their job, and what you're going to hear is, in the OMEA competition, we get ones in everything. And if you don't know the scoring, one is the best score you can get. So band gets the best score you can get, choir gets the best score you can get, orchestra gets the best score you can get. And just so you know, this is not a one-year occurrence. This pretty much happens every year for many years. So if you ever had any time to come in, like today was a final exam day, and I walked into the band room and they were playing for a final exam day, they're still playing. They never stop playing, and where my office is located, I can hear them all the time. In the summertime, I get the joy of having the tubas on rain days right behind my office door because I can hear those tubas. It's an amazing program. It has amazing teachers, and I'm going to call up the directors. Mr. Brian King, the band director, come on up. Mrs. Vicki Eicher, our choral director. Mr. Andy Hire, our orchestra director.
Good evening. Thank you. We're just so proud of our students, you know, all of them. We have three of them here with us tonight. I'd like to welcome down our officers, our drum major this year, Cece, Cecilia Lee, Alyssa Maddox, and Adriana Kostjak. Come on down, guys.
Thank you, board. It's a joy, and people ask me, "Why does she still stick around?" This is why. Such talent, such wonderful directors, such wonderful administration, and most of all, my student leadership. So this year, with Conturum, Ms. Jessica Deal and Mr. Tristan Faircloth could not be here today. They are our amazing co-presidents of our AA Contorum, and then Ms. Sophia Kreese and Ms. Lilian Ferguson, our wonderful officers of Women's Corral.
And we have student leaders from our orchestras. We have our Symphony Orchestra President, Connor Banning. We have our Vice President, Natalie Hans. Both of them are also in the Strongsville High School Chamber Strings. And then President of our String Orchestra, Samantha Lang, and our Vice President, Ashley Haslett.
Just real quick, if you've never, I video record it every year, because I'm up here because of my daughter. They, when they do the orchestra, and I'm the one I have the most experience with, they come out and they write the scores on a piece of cardboard paper, and the kids gather around. And for those of you who loves, I love sports, which is why I have all these daughters that play music, because I love sports. If you've ever seen like a sporting event, when someone scores a winning goal, that's what this is. The entire group goes nuts and screams and yells. I, it's funny, I record it every year and put it on social media, so these guys really do have a passion that if you've never been to a concert, even if you don't have a kid in the orchestra or the band, come to a concert. It's really worth it. Once again, congratulations to all of our talented musicians and as well as our phenomenal directors. So again, another round of applause for all that they've accomplished this year. And finally, probably the most bittersweet thing we do each year is we say goodbye to some of our phenomenal staff, and so I'm going to turn it over to Jenny Pelco, our Assistant Superintendent, who's going to recognize our retirees for this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Reba. I think we've worked together for too long, because my first sentence is, "This is such a bittersweet evening." Celebrating those who have worked to support the students of Strongsville City Schools for so many years, yet knowing that the knowledge that they possess and the dedication that they have shown is going to be leaving us after tomorrow, I believe, for some of you. It's my honor to be able to recognize the retirement class of 2023. Among the 13 of them that are present here this evening, they have collected over 370 years of experience educating, advising, transporting, or feeding the students, and in some cases, staff of Strongsville City Schools. I can't even begin to total the number of people that you have guided, influenced, and made a lasting impact on over these last years. At this point, I'm going to ask George if he would come up and help me recognize our first retiree. And while he's coming up, I would also like to thank the tech department, the plaques that you see here on stage, they were instrumental in helping us create. I'd also like to thank Dan Hogan and Ted Hardaby for their knowledge to teach them how to make these for our parting gift for our retirees this evening. Our first retiree that I'd like to recognize is Ruth Ann Franzak. If you could come on up. I gotta say some nice things about you here. All right, Ruth Ann was hired with the district in 2006 as a benefit specialist. She then was so good at her job, we decided she could take on even more, so she started her current role as Coordinator of Payroll and Benefits in 2010. In 17 years, she has never missed a payroll, no matter what. Yeah. We really appreciate that. Even during COVID, her and I had a top-secret drop, as I had to meet her on the side of the road to give her the laptop, so payroll could still be done on time. Whether payroll had to be done bi-weekly, bi-monthly, or by whenever we needed it, Ruth Ann planned her life around payroll to ensure everybody was paid on time. During her tenure, Ruth Ann played a key role in the following changes: having us join a healthcare consortium, going from fully insured to self-insured healthcare program, changing pay periods, and finally adjusting to a whole new financial system. No need to worry, she is currently sitting side by side with her replacement Lauren to ensure a smooth transition, which speaks to her continued dedication to this district. After all, getting paid is kind of a big deal. Well, Ruth Ann, soon it will be your last payroll, and you can rest your brain and your fingers and enjoy that camper in being retired. Congratulations. Our next retiree is Jackie Benchman. Jackie began as a small group instructor here in Strongsville in 1998, and has since transitioned to an intervention specialist at Strongsville High School. She's a teacher that always went above and beyond for her students in the classroom and on her caseload. Jackie continually went the extra mile to make sure her students had everything they needed to make it through to graduation. Whether it was endless hours after school working to make sure her students and parents were supported, or ensuring everyone was welcome, Jackie was the epitome of a student-centered teacher. Finally, Jackie, may you have fair winds and following seas. You see, the expression "fair winds" is used to wish a person a safe journey, or good fortune, while "following seas" is used to express a smooth journey. I hear you have some plans to spend some time on your boat. All right. Congratulations on your retirement. Our next retiree is Laura Faznott. Laura is retiring after completing 34 and a half years of teaching. Laura began her teaching career in Cleveland before coming to Strongsville. Since teaching in Strongsville, she has worked as an intervention specialist at both Chapman and Maraski Elementary. Laura has been working at Whitney Elementary for the past 11 years as a classroom teacher. So Laura, as Cameron and I sometimes interview new candidates to our district, we often ask them what their strength is, and usually, you know what answer we get? Usually, it's building positive relationships. However, sometimes candidates struggle on how to respond to how they will go about doing that. Well, Laura, maybe they should contact you, because you are a shining example of building positive relationships effectively. You've spent many years serving as the PTA Teacher Representative, ensuring there is open communication between staff and families. She challenged herself to truly get to know each one of her students individually to ensure she was meeting specific needs. Laura also has created many friendships at Whitney by finding opportunities to build relationships outside of her own grade level by taking time to just eat with the staff in the lounge and attend social gatherings outside of school. Enjoy your retirement, Laura. You're going to be missed. Deborah Ganzi. Debbie began as a traveling music teacher in 1991 and has had 32 successful years here in Strongsville. Mrs. Hawk, Debbie's principal, shared this: "Debbie is by far one of the best educators I have ever worked with. She genuinely cares about each and every student who walks into her classroom. She gets to know each student on a personal level and does everything possible to form connections and relationships with these kids. Debbie has worked tirelessly to instill positive lifelong qualities and characteristics we wish all adults would have. She not only teaches, but demonstrates the characteristics of a model Mustang. I couldn't agree more with that statement. You strive to make class fun and continually find ways to not only teach music, but expose your students to various cultures and traditions. Additionally, through your Veterans Day programs and performances, you build an awareness and appreciation among our students for those who serve or have served in the armed forces. By sharing your passion for music, you have created a legacy of the importance of community and how music can bring people together. You encourage students to step out of their comfort zone through sing-alongs, grade-level performances, and trying out new instruments. Thank you for all of your hard work throughout the years. Mrs. Ganzi, you're going to be a tough act to follow." Leanna Hagrich.
As a PE teacher in the district since 1987, Leanna has worked at SHS, Maraski, Drake, and Kinsner since the building opened in 1998. As her principal, Mr. Diedrich shares, "Walking into Mrs. H.'s class, you will find students actively learning new skills with her willingness to try new and innovative lessons. From roller skating to lacrosse, Mrs. H. finds a way to make her lessons tailored to her students' individual abilities and needs. She's a champion of Field Day. Year after year, she undertakes the momentous task of organizing outdoor activities where students get to demonstrate their skills that they have learned. From setting the day up, creating maps, schedules, recruiting volunteers, buying popsicles, water stations, including what to do if there's a rain day, there's always a backup plan with Leanna, you exceed everyone's expectations every year for Field Day. Additionally, I would say that Leanna is a leader among her colleagues and has mentored her replacement since day one. Your passion for physical fitness, your ability to remain calm among the chaos, and your willingness to do whatever is needed will be missed. All the best in your retirement."
Karen Schindler. Karen has also been with Strongsville since 1987, and has been one of the best art educators I have known, and she's been here for 36 years. Karen is an idea person who backs it up with data, logic, and turns it into action. She drew up plans when it came to turning the junior high into a middle school and creating the team concept. She and former music teacher Bill Bedford created an interdisciplinary course now known as AMP Art Music Production by blending visual art with music technology. I would paint Karen as a leader from her role as a mentor for new teachers to her being team leader throughout her career, and for also being a part of the BLT and PBIS teams. Karen is the portrait of perfection by being named the Ohio Art Teacher of the Year by the Northeastern Ohio Art Education Association in 2019. Karen designs her classroom with an art studio feeling, quiet with music in the backroom that sets the tone for creativity. Karen used a wide brush when it came to her students by not only focusing on the final product, yet the learning process along the way to visualize growth and improvement toward that final product. You will be missed by so many, including me. Thank you for your positive impact on so many of our students and always being the brave one to share what may have been going on in an effort to make things better. Congratulations and enjoy your retirement. At this time, I would like to introduce two of our union presidents to assist me here on stage. Ohio Association of Public School Employees of 290, Mr. Paul Cummins, and Ohio Association of Public School Employees of 028, Mr. Mike Hykar. I'd also like to call Karen Figgish to the stage. Karen has been in Strongsville since 1993, where she began in the cafeteria. She started working in the Transportation Department in 2007 as a bus aide. She is one of the most energetic, caring, and engaging people you will ever meet. Mr. Washington, her supervisor, shared this: "I can remember when I first came into the department and had the privilege of driving a route that Karen was assigned to. The way she engaged the students was nothing short of amazing. She was excited to greet them, and they appeared to be equally excited to see her. They would engage in conversation about their previous evening's activities and what was coming for their present day. I remember thinking, wow, what an amazing individual. She truly made each one feel loved and important. Karen, what a good person you are, not only here at work, but I know you are appreciated by your family as well. Enjoy retirement, and we are really going to miss you." Robin Gilliam.
Robin began as a playground aide in 2001. Currently, she works at the middle school as a monitor. Robin is always smiling and willing to help out no matter what is needed. You will see her working in the office or throughout the building, helping both adults and students. She prides her-
and students. She prides herself on building positive relationships with students. She embodies the definition of being your best. Robin knows how to put things first. When at work, it's the students and problem-solving issues. However, at home, she puts her family first. And I know she is looking very forward to a new grandson? Grandson? In June? June or July? June. June, yeah.
Possibly July.
Oh, possibly July, okay. Well, congratulations on your retirement, Robin, and moving on from monitor to grandma. Congratulations.
Iris Jones.
Iris began in 1995 as a bus driver, where she has worked now for twenty-seven and a half years. Iris was one of the most caring and efficient employees in the department. She always took the time to care for each of her students. She knew them all by name, which is not really an easy feat when we're talking over a hundred students a day, driving them to and from school. Her main concern for her students was always their safety. She was always willing to go the extra mile to ensure that a child arrives safely at home. Iris never lacked the ability to tell you like it is, but she always did it in a respectful way in an effort to make a situation better. Although you have been retired now for a few months, we still miss you and wish you the continued relaxation and vacation you just got back from and all the enjoyment that retirement brings. Congratulations.
Linda Koontz.
Linda began her journey with Chapman Elementary in 1989, when she began volunteering with the PTA when her oldest son was in first grade. She became involved as an active member of the PTA and served in various leadership positions, including PTA president. Linda Later... Linda Later... That's a tongue twister. Linda Later began her twenty-six-year career with Strongsville City Schools and became head kitchen manager in 2003, where she served there ever since that time. Linda has taken such pride in serving the students of Chapman Elementary over the years. It has always been important to her that students have a positive experience from going through the lunch line to the quality of food in which she prepares and serves for them. Chapman has been a second home to Linda, and I know she will miss it there immensely. Linda, I'm sure you are looking forward to spending more time with your family and being able to visit more with your two granddaughters who reside in Arizona. We wish you all the best. But before I let you go, I have to tell you a fun fact that she told me earlier today. So fifty years ago, next week, right? She graduated from Strongsville High School in our current gymnasium, right?
Yes.
And now has come full circle and is retiring here in our auditorium. Congratulations, Linda.
Bob Mahoney.
So even though Bob only worked for us for seven and a half years, still a long time, seven and a half years, but nine years? It was nine years? I'm sorry. We're missing a couple of years. Okay, nine years. We'll correct that. Apparently, the saying "To know him is to love him" applies to Bob, according to your supervisors. They say that he is truly a great man, and it was a pleasure to work with him. No matter what was asked of him, he would always simply say, "Well, if that's what you need me to do, all right." On one occasion, Curtis remembers doing his route, and the students asked where he was. Curtis told them that they had chased him away. They all wanted his address so that they could send letters of apologies and tell them that they would behave much, much better if you came back. Your boost of cheer and being very upbeat is already a mist as you officially ended with us at the end of March. Hope you are enjoying retirement and traveling here and there on your scooter. Thank you for doing one of the toughest jobs in the district. All the best, Bob.
Nancy Surak.
Nancy began as an aide at Chapman in 1998. Then only a few short years later, in 2001, she became the Building Secretary at Maraski Elementary. According to her principal, Mike Griffin, she has been the absolute best secretary he has ever had. Nancy, although may have a serious tone at times, she takes pride in her work and leads the building in a way that everyone follows. Nancy always has the answers and never has to look things up or dig for information. She works committed to the success of the principal, the teachers, the staff, and especially our students. Nancy always has a friendly smile to greet guests and parents. She's an amazing person. Her institutional knowledge will definitely be missed. Wishing you all the best in your retirement, Nancy. So well deserved.
If we could give all of our retirees one more hand, one round of applause. We truly appreciate all of you and your contributions to our district, and we wish you all the best in your retirement. So congratulations, and yes, you still need to show up to work one more day tomorrow. Thank you.
As Jenny said, congratulations to all of our retirees. I have so many wonderful memories with so many of you, and wish you the best in your future. And congratulations to all of our recognitions tonight. It's a great night to be very proud of Strongsville City Schools and the great employees and students we're blessed to have and work with and educate and support our kids each and every day. So with that, Ms. Hausum, that ends our recognitions, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Reiva. Next up is public comment. But before we continue, if anyone needs to go out and celebrate, as Jenny said, we just have one more day tomorrow, so feel free. Congratulations again, everyone.
Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Motion to approve regular Board of Education Work Session minutes from April 6th and Board of Education Work Session minutes from April 27th, 2023. All district video and audio recordings will be permanent part of the minutes. That's part of the consent calendar. Next on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first is the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast was presented at the last board meeting at the work session. If there's any questions?
Has anything changed?
No, nothing's changed.
Thank you.
It's there as presented, from the presentation last meeting. The next item is the financial report for the month of May, or I'm sorry, the month of April. We're still currently in May. The board report and the supplemental report are attached to the agenda. The next item is new funds for fiscal year 2023. There are two safety grants. The first is the Ohio Attorney General's Fiscal Year 23 School Safety Grant, and that would be in Fund 49999223. And the next is the Ohio K-12 School Safety Grant Program Round 5, and that is Fund Number 5999123. The difference between the fund numbers, the first one is a state grant while the school safety program grant is a federal grant. The next item is the grant approval for these two grants. The Ohio Attorney General School Safety Grant is for $30,225.01, and the Ohio K-12 School Safety Grant Program Round 5 is for $450,000. Item E4, SCF Grant Approvals. We have several SCF grants. The first one is Athletic Tables Treatments Tables Grant for $8,461.32. The next is Strongsville High School AP and American History Thinking Kids Grant for $215. Strongsville High School CPE Physical Science Grant for $450. The next one is Coffee Supplies Grant for the Mau Unit for $480. Next is for Chapman Elementary. It's a Boom Whackers Grant for $500. Those are instruments for the music department. Whispering Lights Grants for $90. For Kinsner Elementary Flexible Seating Grant for $285. And for Sora Elementary Classroom Mailboxes Science Grants for $112. Or $120. Item E6, Invoice Order Approval for Fund 3. This is for Snyder Recreation Kinsner Playground Equipment for Purchase Order 2333229. The PO date was May 5, 2023, and the amount was $8,550, and the date of purchase was February 14, 2023. This is an invoice that was split between the school district and the Kinsner PTA. Item 7 is amendments to the permanent appropriation. The changes are listed in the exhibit. They are for Fund 2, the Bond Retirement Fund, adjustments due to county auditor fees, which were slightly higher than estimate for the homestead and rollback collections. Fund 019, other grants for the SCF Grant Awards, and an ODNR grant for $500 that was approved in March. Item C for a miscellaneous state grant for Fund 499 for the Ohio Attorney General's School Safety Grant, and then Item D, Fund 599, miscellaneous federal grant for the Ohio K-12 Safety Grant. Item E8, Medical Prescription Insurance Rates. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the medical and prescription premiums be approved as presented with an increase of 15% effective July 1, 2023. Those were underrated based on our insurance carriers. The increases, as I discussed in the five-year forecast, are increased based on our current claims rate, so slightly higher increase than in years past. As mentioned the last meeting, hopefully this is a one-time thing, and we see our claims starting to decrease. But based on the current claims, it's an increase of 15% for the upcoming school year. E9, Vision Rates Increase. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the vision premiums for fiscal year '24 be approved. There is no rate increase, and it is effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Full-day kindergarten tuition. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the district set tuition for the 224 full-day kindergarten at $2,400 per student. In the event the district is moved to remote learning, tuition will either be reduced or a refund will be issued at $13.48 per day minus any reductions applied. It is further recommended that the treasurer be charged with collecting tuition and preparing tuition contracts for parents to pay tuition in a lump sum or two annual payments. The treasurer may also grant parents a $50 reduction in tuition if paid in full prior to the beginning of the school year. Students qualified for free lunch may receive a $200 reduction in tuition, and students qualifying for reduced lunch may receive $100 reduction in tuition. Item E11, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the contract between the Strongsville City Schools and education and frontline education be renewed. A two-year contract is recommended for financial planning and analytics, budget management analytics, comparative analytics. With the two-year contract, fiscal year '25 is guaranteed an increase of no more than 5.5%. Applicant tracking will be renewed for two quarters as the district is transitioning to power schools for the service. Item E12, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Strongsville City Schools renews participation in the use of electronic vendor audit system EVAS and the electronic payroll audit system EPAS for a period of five years at a rate of $3,539 annually. And the last item, which will require a separate vote, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution pursuant to Section 5705.212 of the revised co-submitting to the electors of Strongsville City Schools that the district, that the school district, the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy for the purpose of current expenses be approved. This is for the renewal levy of the 5.9, the renewal levy that we had the first resolution passed at the, or approved to get certified in the, is it in the April meeting? So this is the second resolution for this to officially put us on the ballot in November. This will require four affirmative votes in order to be approved. It requires supermajority.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stovcek, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then I also have two more items under Section F for treasurer's report, student services. Due to conflict of interest, these are under my section. They're for North Coast Therapy and Associates. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with North Coast Therapy to provide occupational and physical therapy services and any additional services requested per Exhibit A for school-age and preschool students with disabilities for the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school years, including extended school year. And Item F2, North Coast Therapy and Associates. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the board enters into an agreement with North Coast Therapy to provide occupational and physical therapy services for school-age and preschool students with disabilities for the fiscal year '23 extended school year. And with no further questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Dr. Reiva?
Ms. Hausum, I do have a couple items under my section for tonight. The first is an annual item to approve the recommendation of a services agreement between Rite Aid School and Strongsville City Schools. As stated in the exhibit, this is our before-and-after school program that we've had for the past two years, and they've done a nice job, and it's the same contract as we approved last year. We just do this on an annual basis. The second item is the resolution of intent to join the expedited local partnership program. So be resolved upon the recommendation of my recommendation. So be it resolved upon the recommendation, my recommendation, to approve the resolution of intent for Strongsville City Schools to participate in the ALP program in conjunction with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, and this does require a vote.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stovchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Cameron, do you want to give us just a little background?
Sure. This is the program that our partners from GPD presented on at our last meeting. This gives us the opportunity to be a part of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. If we follow the ALP program, we could earn reimbursements on dollars that would be spent towards a new elementary project that we've been discussing and planning, and we'll begin to share with the community here in the coming months. But this is just the first step of the process. If we follow the process, there's certain design manual guidelines that we'll have to follow, but probably end of summer, early fall, that's when the Board will have to make the final decision as to whether we'll participate or not. So this gets us to meet the criteria to move forward, but we still have a decision point to make whether we actually want to go forward with it or not, like I said, late summer, early fall.
Thank you. Any questions?
So this vote doesn't mean we're automatically with them?
Correct. This just means, hey, we're interested in the possibility. We're going to file the necessary paperwork now so that they know we're interested, and then the final decision will be a few months from now.
Okay. Any other questions? George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Brechner, Operations Manager, for the Business Service Report for the month. Steve?
The first item in this section is the Master Electric Energy Sales Agreement between the district and Power for Schools. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Master Electric Energy Sales Agreement between the district and Power for Schools endorsed electric supplier, ENGIE Resources LLC, as stated in the exhibit, and this agreement was brokered with our partnership with Ohio Schools Council. The second item is student accident insurance. Be resolved upon-
Steve, hold on one second.
Oh, sorry.
That one needed a vote.
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Steve, do you want to explain a little bit?
Okay, so Power for Schools is a branch of the Ohio Schools Council which we're in with. I think it's 400 and some school districts at this point. Sorry, I don't have the exact number. But what Ohio Schools Council does is they contact all the energy brokers, or at least the energy brokers contact them in some cases as well. They go through, they go through all the contracts, they work out all the details, and then they present to us the best supplier for the money. It's the, it's a common thought of, it's the, there's power in buying power in numbers. So this is what they presented to us, is the best supplier that they have. Of course, as everyone else, we're going to be paying a little bit more for the energy, but they feel like they've been able to broker a deal. And from everything I've seen, and I actually have energy brokers contact me, there's a lot of devil in the details. So we've gone with Power for Schools before I started this job, and we've always had a good deal brokered through them. So I would recommend staying with that relationship.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is district insurance. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to purchase property, inland marine, boiler, machinery, crime, automobile, general liability, and umbrella insurance from Liberty Mutual Insurance Company. The agent is Todd Associates Incorporated and Alara Group Company, as endorsed by the Ohio Schools Council, at a one-year contract price of $959,340.60 for the period of July 1, 2023 through July 1, 2024, which includes all school groups. Last year's cost was $409,872.55. Oh, I think I skipped over. I'm sorry. I did.
Just finish this one, Steve, and then go back.
Be further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board and Education recognizes the following groups, as authorized by, as authorized school groups, and they are in the Strongsville City Schools insurance policy, and all those groups are listed there. Sorry, going back to the second one is student accident insurance. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accepts the proposal of Guaranteed Trust Life Insurance Company through Love Insurance Company as a student's insurance program for Strongsville City Schools for the '23-'24 school year. Be further adopted upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following be adopted. All students participating in interscholastic and intermural activities shall either purchase the appropriate insurance coverage or present a waiver signed by the parent or guardian. Such waiver shall release in all authority or in charge from any liability resulting from medical claims. And the final section here, or the final issue or item, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the operations manager be authorized to enter an agreement with Suburban Transportation Company Incorporated for the '23-'24 school year for the transportation of special education and handicapped students within the Strongsville City School District to in-district schools and also classes at schools out of the district. Transportation to in-district schools will also be provided for students who become homeless while attending Strongsville City Schools and now reside outside the district. This agreement is put into place due to the impracticality of transporting these students by Strongsville City School bus transportation.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next up with our curriculum report is our Director of Curriculum, Aaron Green.
Good evening. Tonight I have three items under my section. The first item is our summer school dates for '22-'23. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that our elementary and secondary summer school be approved for the following dates, and those are as shown. Elementary, June 5th through 22nd, 2023, that's Monday through Thursday. Secondary summer school, June 5th through 29th, and that should be 2023, and that's Monday through Thursday as well. Item 2 would be our graduates of Strongsville High School. I had the pleasure of attending their ceremony on Sunday, as we all did. Wish these graduates well. We have, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the attached list be approved. And lastly, we have an out-of-state trip for our Strongsville High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that permission be granted to the High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team to travel to Louisville, Kentucky to participate in soccer competitions, September 15th through 17th, 2023. Transportation via chartered motor coach, expenses paid by participating students, as well as fundraising activities.
Any questions for Aaron?
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Next is Andy Treheu, our Director of Student Services with the Student Service Report for the month.
Good evening, members of the Board. I have eight items for your consideration this evening. The first two read exactly the same. They are for Insight Behavioral Consulting. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Insight Behavioral Consulting, operating an educational institution known as Insight Academy, for placement of a student who requires special education-related services for the 2023-'24 school year in the amount of $72,800 and an additional $5,000 if the student attends extended school year. So Items 1 and 2 are for two different students. Item number 3 for Steps Educational Group. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Steps Educational Group for placement of a student with a disability for the '23-'24 school year and ESY extended school year if necessary for the total cost for services of $93,000. Items 4, 5, and 6 are all the same. They read the same for all, for three different students. For Kids Link School, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Kids Link School for the placement of a student with disabilities for the '23-'24 school year in the amount of $93,000. Number 7 is for Solutions Behavioral Consulting. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education enters into an agreement with Solutions Behavioral Consulting for the '23-'24 school year, including extended school year, to provide consultation for students and consultation for training for staff in the area of behavioral intervention services. Item number 8, tuition-free admission for foreign exchange student. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that tuition-free admission for the '23-'24 school year be granted to the following foreign exchange student listed below.
Any questions for Andy?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have turned it over to Jenny Pelkhor, our Assistant Superintendent with the Human Resource Report for the month. Jenny?
Thank you. I have the following items for your consideration this evening. Under 1, resignations for certificated staff. Under 2, retirement for non-certificated staff. Under 3, appointments for administrative staff. 4, appointments for certificated staff. Under 5, appointments for extended school year staff. Under 6, we have appointments for summer learning staff. Under 7, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Under 8, we have the appointment for our certificated athletic supplemental contracts, and I believe this does require a vote.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stovchak, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Ms. Stovchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
No.
Mrs. Hausum?
No.
And Mrs. Bissel?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Under 9, I have the appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. 10, appointment for certificated supplemental contract. 11, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts for extended time. Under 12, contract recommendations for administrative staff. Under 13, contract recommendations for certificated staff. Under 14, contract recommendations for certificated unlimited contracts. 15, contract recommendations for leadership. 16, contract recommendations for non-certificated staff. 17, stipends for our local professional development committee. 18, medical leave certificated staff. 19, medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Item 20, unpaid leaves for certificated staff. 21, unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. 22, we have our list of volunteers. Item 23, we have a recommendation for Power School, our Unified Talent Applicant Tracking and Records System. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a 12-month contract for the purchase of Power School Unified Talent Applicant Tracking and Records software system at an annual cost of $15,861.83, plus the one-time setup and configuration fees of $13,086.15. This will replace frontline applicant tracking system. And finally, under 24, we have a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for Jenny? If not, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our board reports. Michelle, report on Polaris.
Thank you. I want to share a couple of congratulations and accomplishments from Polaris students. First to Nick Dashar, who won a gold medal in the Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Competition. So well done, Nick. Congrats on that. And also congratulations to Chef O, who is the culinary teacher at Polaris. When Nick had the opportunity to honor a teacher at the Lacrosse Night Teacher Appreciation Event, he chose Chef O from Polaris, and they got to share some time on the field, and Chef O was recognized. So congratulations to Chef O as well. Similarly, Case McIntyre is a student here who just graduated this past weekend and was part of our top 5% here. And as part of that, he also gets to nominate a teacher to acknowledge, and he chose Kyle Stellar. He's the project lead-the-way engineering instructor here at Strongsville. So congratulations to both Case and Kyle. Finally, congratulations to Julie Bashara. She was part of the first-place team in the Business Professionals of America National Competition for the Financial Portfolio Management Team Event. So well done, Julie. And then finally, two notes. You can check out Polaris's website. The Lieutenant Governor John Huestead visited it early March as part of the In-Demand Jobs Week, and so there is a little video you can watch about, that he created with his support staff about In-Demand Jobs Week, and it features one of the Polaris students. So check that out. And then last call for Camp Discovery. Students entering is grades 5 through 8. They have now opened up registration to students who are outside of our consortium districts. So if you have child, grandchild, niece, nephew, friend who lives outside of the Fairview, Berea, Brooklyn, Olmsted Falls, North Olmsted, Strongsville, Berea districts, they are now eligible. So take a look and grab those spots before they finally fill. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. We're on legislation. Rich?
Thank you, Mrs. Hausum. Next week is going to be a critical day for school districts throughout the state. The Senate Finance Committee on May 31st will be having testimony on House Bill 33, which is the budget. It'll be our turn, or our time to make sure that the senators in Columbus hear from the school districts. Our own Matt Dolan, who is the state senator for our area, is the chair of that committee. And this is, we're getting close to the end of the biennium budget process. The biennium budget needs to be in place by the end of June. So this is the next step. The House has already presented one. And some of the things that are concerns for the school districts is they're looking at our cash reserve policies. And on the one hand, we have a good cash reserve. We just recently passed a cash reserve policy to give direction to the money, but in Columbus, they're questioning if you have these large cash reserves, do you need the full funding of the Fair Funding Act, or the Fair Funding Program? And so it's important that Senator Dolan here from constituents in Strongsville that in my opinion, you can't have it both ways. You can't expect us to be fiscally responsible and good stewards of the dollars, and then in a way punish us for that by not fully funding the Fair Funding Act. So now would be the time to either ring up Senator Dolan or send him an email to, for the Senate to continue to fund the Fair Funding Formula that they committed to two years ago. That completes my legislative report.
Thank you. Board committee reports, I'm sorry, Board Liaison reports. City Council. Discussion continued around the possible interchange that is being considered at Boston Road. The mayor and council are asking the public for their patience while studies are being conducted by independent firms. The annual Memorial Day Parade will be this coming Monday, kicking off at 11:00 a.m. from St. Joseph Church and traveling south on Pearl Road to and ending at Freedom Trail gazebo, where a ceremony honoring the nation's fallen heroes will take place. Finally, just a reminder, Howell Road is closed to through traffic for approximately 40 days for a resurfacing project. That concludes the report.
Mrs. Hausum? If I can just piggyback real quick. I wanted to give a shout-out to Finance Director Eric Dean, who received the, I want to make sure I get it right. The Government Finance Officers Association awarded Strongsville with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 2021 financial report. We're always proud that George does such a great job for us in the school district, receiving year after year awards for great financial reporting. And it's nice to see that our partners at the city find the importance in that in the same way. So we can congratulate Eric Dean for that.
So we can congratulate Eric Dean for that, and we'll have to have a photo opportunity where both our treasurer and Eric can show off their plaques. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Strongsville Education Foundation, I think they have met twice since our last report on them. The majority of the meeting that I was able to attend centered around debriefing of the foundation's very successful fundraiser, Jockeys and Julips. Just another thank you to the foundation and all who support them. Without them, the grants, scholarships, and field trips would not be possible. Stay tuned in the fall. Talk is that the fundraiser is going through a facelift, and we'll see some positive changes. Sharon, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, they are thinking about ways of getting more participants. And they really do do a great job for our schools, and I don't think they get enough credit just because they're kind of behind the scenes. So I'm hoping that they might change it around because May's so busy. Maybe the fall will be a better, we can all get out there and support them. That would be great.
And that was the talk, changing it to the beginning of the school year.
Right. I think November or December. So.
It'll be good. Thank you. PTA Council.
PTA is finished for the year. They ended with a great luncheon, and they installed all the new, their new council. The only thing that they do have left is they are doing a stroller food fundraiser to get extra money for scholarships and grants. So go onto your Facebook, look for your people from the PTA. They should be posting it on their different pages. And it's very easy, they said. It's just a QR code, and it would really help them. They want to just kind of get an extra head start for all, everything they do, grants, scholarships, parties, everything. So if you could start now, it'd be great. Just look them up in Facebook. And that concludes my thing.
Thank you. Board Committee Reports. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee has not met since the last report, and the next meeting is to be announced.
Policy Committee.
Similarly, we have not met since the last report, and the next meeting is to be announced.
Facilities Committee. We were able to meet last week, and discussion revolved around summer work that will be completed by our Maintenance Department over the summer. The committee received an update on what will be done with safety grant funds, and there was discussion about possible future capital improvement projects. And that concludes the report. Business Advisory Council Committee.
We haven't had, we're done for the year, so we will continue in September.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type slash action consent, which items constitute the Consent Calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board or the Superintendent requests that such items be removed from the Consent Calendar and voted upon separately. Do we have anything that needs to be removed? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Howson, before you do, we do have one correction on the curriculum, so that would be I, 1, changing the secondary summer school to be the 2023 school year.
Thank you.
I can just change it in the agenda.
It's the first one under Erin's section.
If we leave it as 2022, does that mean everybody can get out of going to summer school?
So secondary summer school, where it says 2022, should be 2023?
Correct. So no correction is needed now, George?
Correct, it's corrected now.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
And Ms. Tocheck?
Yes.
Motion passes. Back to Dr. Reba.
Thank you. We do have a few items under timely information to celebrate at our different levels. First of all, Maraski Elementary School, we're going to highlight the coding work they did in third grade with Mrs. Hobie and Mrs. Benson. They've been collaborating throughout the school year to help their students learn coding. They learned different modules and courses through coding.org, which also syncs with their Google Classroom. So they were able to code some different games with their classmates, present those games, allow their other classmates to play the games they were creating, and, you know, help them problem-solve the work that they're doing in coding. So according to the teachers, it's been a great example of the students demonstrating what we're aspiring to with our Model Mustang, which is being innovative, collaborative, and global. So it's great to see coding starting at such a young age with our third graders. At the middle school, we featured this, I think, a week or so ago on our 60 seconds with the Superintendent, but a shout-out to Mr. Rodak and his Career Connections class. They developed a partnership with the Strongsville Historical Village to help with some landscaping needs. So not only did they do some math skills of learning about area and ordering of mulch, but gave back to their, their community and paid it back to, to the Strongsville Historical Society to support and get the grounds in great shape for the season. You know, one of the things, one of the students said, Julie, an eighth grader, said, "I think service above self," which is the Rotary's motto, "means to put your community, to put community projects and things to help the world in front of only doing things for yourself. It is important to serve others because it is making a greater difference in the world and making the world a better place." Julia said it better than anybody else could. That's a, that's a great thing, and if our young people can embody that, the world truly would be a better place. So appreciate Mr. Rodak's real-life connection that he made for our students in his class. And finally, as Erin shared earlier, we had a phenomenal day on Sunday, celebrating all of the accomplishments of the class of 2023. So many things about the ceremony are wonderful, but I do always enjoy the opportunity where Mr. Winkler at the beginning shares the highlights through the academics, the arts, and the athletics. And so wonderful to see all in one spot, the talents and the accomplishments of our students. So congratulations to our class of 2023, and we're excited for all that the future holds for you moving forward. In terms of dates, remember, I don't think I have to mention tomorrow's the last day of school, and I don't think anybody wants to hear about the first day of school coming up, so we'll pause there and hope everybody has a safe and enjoyable summer. And as I said in the email I sent quickly today, thank you so much for our wonderful staff, parents, and communities for a phenomenal school year, and we look forward to getting even better for you and your kids in the 23-24. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board of Education miscellaneous. Do we have any others?
I have one. I, a little over a year ago, I attended Rhythmology 2022, and I thought it couldn't possibly get any better. And I was wrong because last week I attended Rhythmology 2023. There was just the right amount of cowbell. It was, it was really enjoyable. For those who aren't aware, Rhythmology is an all percussion event. It's an annual tradition at the high school. And one of the things that I enjoy a lot about it is, is that it's very much student-led. It, it reflects the excellence that we were able to acknowledge earlier today, but it's nice to see that the students take a leadership role in it. There's some advisors that help with it, but all the planning, all the practicing, everything about it is student-driven or student-led. And I did want to give a shout-out to the seniors from that year, and that was Adriana Kostjak, Christina Graves, and Billy Williams. So again, it's just a fun event, and it, it does highlight the talent that we, another example of the talent that we have at the high school, and it was just a lot of fun. I wanted to give a shout-out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Hearing none. Next, meeting notifications. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, June 8, 2023, 7:00 p.m., in the meeting room of the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. A regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, June 29, 2023, 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the Administration Building, 18199 Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. We do have need for executive session to discuss.
To prepare for and review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, to consider the employment of a public employee, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Kilbane, second by Mrs. Bissell. George, can you call the roll?
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Tocheck?
Yes.
Motion passes. We don't see a need to continue in public session after executive session is concluded. Have a great night, and I want to wish everybody a happy summer. Stay safe, and we'll see you, all students, back in August.
And, Ms. Howson, what time are we going into-
Oh, we are going into executive session at 8:55.
Thank you.